This meeting and also for security purposes, I'll ask every, every member that's on the call to share their video and to mute, mute their calls also. So with that being said, we'll go ahead and jump in with item number one. As you all know, on an annual basis, do an update of our code of student conduct. And Dr. Mary Gist and her team have worked very closely to, to ensure that we have the necessary updates in place to move forward for the 2020, 21 school year. So with that being said, Dr. Gist, if you don't mind jumping in and David will bring our presentation up. We can get started with, with the code presentation.
It took multiple firefighters and a chance of life to get free. Tracy walked away with minor cuts and bruises.
We're grateful that she's. Dr. Gist, you may be on mute. We still have, we still have one radio or television in the background that, that will need to, turn it off.
Good evening, Mr. House, board members. Appreciate your, your attendance this evening and I'm, I'm happy to share our proposed changes to the student code of conduct with you. David, if you'll go to the next slide, we have a, have had a committee working on this revision since September of 2019. That committee has consisted of two high school principals, one middle school principal, a middle school assistant principal, all level directors have had input, lead counselors, representatives of the special populations department and our section 504 coordinator and our district council, Carol Joiner, has read and, and given us input on, on all of the updates. We have needed to revise significantly this year based on two really big reasons. One is to align with the district work that we're doing with social emotional learning resources. Secondly, we, we need to have some significant revisions to help us deal with our disproportionality issue with school suspensions and remandments. And I want to, in the next couple of slides, I'll go into those in a little bit more detail. First of all, proposed changes to the student code of conduct this year are aligned with the school district's strategic work in the area of providing social and emotional learning resources for students. The revisions that you'll see tonight reflect best practice in behavioral strategies for supporting all students. Secondly, we, we have a disproportionate number of students with disabilities and African-American students who are being suspended out of school or remanded to the alternative school. This is partly due to the current and past structure of the student code of conduct. So many of these changes are in effort to reduce this disproportionality. There are four major areas of change and I'll go through these quickly and then we'll take them one at a time and I'll, I'll share some details and examples with you. And I'll pause after each of the four major areas to, to see if you have questions. So the areas of change are, are categorization of student offenses, our use of points, an added emphasis on supports and interventions for students, and changes in wording aligned to current practice, best practice or legal recommendation. So that first area, the categorization of offenses, our current and past practice looks something like this, other than zero tolerance offenses and offenses that require 90 days of remandment at alternative school, points were the sole indicator of the severity of an offense. And sometimes that, that was inaccurate. For example, possession of tobacco and possession of a cell phone had the same point value. We are the only large district in the state of Tennessee who uses a point system and one of only six in the entire state of any size that uses this. Additionally, most schools have had no clear specifications for which offenses should be handled by the classroom teacher prior to writing an office referral. In categorizing our offenses, input was collected from all principals, assistant principals, and several teachers from each middle and high school. This is the proposed categorization of offenses based on the input that we've received from, from school administrators and teachers. Category one offenses would be handled by the classroom teacher. And I'll give you examples of each of these offenses in the following slides. Category two offenses would be considered minor office referrals. Students would be sent to see an administrator. Category three would be more serious office referrals. Category four would be for offenses that include egregious acts that would likely result in remandment to alternative school. We kept bus offenses out of the categorization. Those offenses remain structured the same except for an adjustment of points. And zero tolerance offenses are determined by law. Some examples of category one offenses, these were, these are to be handled by the classroom teacher and no points are to be assigned. And again, this was with quite heavy input from what is current practice of teachers who have good classroom management skills. Tardiness to class, electronic devices, these days, the main one is earbuds or ear pods, cell phones, after, after the first two offenses, a student would then be referred to the office. Talking in class, sleeping in class, not prepared for class, rude or impolite remarks to an adult, and minor dress code offenses. An example of what, what the format would look like and, and some support for teachers for a minor dress code offense that could be handled by the classroom teacher. This is what teachers tell us they are currently doing that works. They simply ask the student if they have a change of clothing and 90% of the time, they have brought a backup in their locker. Ask the student to turn an offensive shirt inside out. Provide duct tape to cover inappropriate rips in clothing. Simply ask the student to pull up sagging pants or remove their cap. Some examples of category two offenses, these would, would be an office referral to a school administrator. They might result in detention or in-school suspension and/or referral to a school counselor. All of these would, would be 10-point offenses. If a student had repeated category one offenses with, with no change, they could then be referred to the office. Boisterous disruptive conduct, dress code issues not handled by the classroom teacher, skipping class, gambling, cheating, forgery, or verbal altercation with a peer. An example of what that might look like, verbal altercation with a peer. That school administrator would be required to contact the parent and would also be required to refer the student to the school counselor. And this is a step that has been missing. If a student has an alter, a verbal altercation with a peer, there is, is something going on. There is a root cause and it's something that typically a school counselor can get to the bottom of and help with. Some options, and these are not optional, but these are choices then that a, an administrator could have, they could refer the student to our support team. They could give the student detention or in-school suspension. Every school for years has had a support team and those historically have, have been used for academic support. And with the implementation of our RTI plans, support teams have waned in their usage, but support teams truly can be used for behavior support as well. So we are rebooting all of our school support teams to make sure that they are used for the support of our students to figure out root causes and, and develop support for our students. Some examples of category three offenses, these are more serious office referrals. They could result in in-school suspension or out-of-school suspension and 20 points would be assigned for those. Repeated category two offenses, possession of tobacco or electronic cigarettes known as vapes, threats, assault, fighting, theft, gangs. We separated gangs into two categories. One would be a display of symbols. Most frequently, that's a student wearing clothing with symbols or having the symbols on their notebook. And then later on, we'll, we'll see that gang recruiting is a much, is a higher level offense. Vandalism less than $500 and leaving school without permission. So if a student leaves school without permission, what is required of the school administrators to contact the parent and refer the student to the school counselor? There is a reason why that student is leaving school. It may be peer conflict, it may be they don't understand how to do the schoolwork. It may be trouble at home, but a school counselor can help in that situation. Some other, some other options that an administrator would choose from would be support team referral, in-school suspension or out-of-school suspension. And some examples finally of category four offenses, these are more serious office referrals, 40 points assigned per offense. The consequence is likely to include remandment to alternative school. These would be repeated category three offenses, arson, bomb threat, credible threat, vandalism over $500, weapons and dangerous instruments, non-lethal firearm and alcohol. And you can see from, from those, those are the types of offenses that we believe alternative school is, is appropriate for, not for skipping class or, or having a cell phone. So this, this offense for alcohol is a category four. This is worded exactly the same way as, as current and, and the last year or two code of conduct, except for 2014. And then we have zero tolerance offenses which stand separately. Those are unchanged, they are determined by state law. And those four zero tolerance offenses are fire, possession of firearms, drugs, assault of teacher or staff, or aggravated assault of teacher or staff. So the next, the next portion over is the use of points, but who has a question about categories?
I have one question real quick and maybe went over it. What makes up a support team?
So there is a support team leader that is selected typically by the principal at each school and they go through training on how to conduct the support team and what supports and interventions are available for different types of behaviors or academic struggles. And what that looks like is a counselor or a teacher or an administrator may refer a student to that support team leader and say, you know, little Johnny is, is doing this and this and needs support. And that support team leader will call a meeting of all of that student's teachers. They'll sit around the table, they will call the parent in, they'll discuss when specific behaviors happen, theories about why, and, and they will determine is a schedule change needed or does the student need some anger management counseling or do they need home support? They, they, they figure out root causes and provide supports.
And Mr. Nelson, this is quite a bit, quite a bit different than, than what's been done in the past. We're trying to get away from the quick draw punitive action, even though a, a student may present a, a certain behavior, that behavior is being presented for a particular reason. It's a cry out of me. So this is our opportunity to, to not act so quick and so punitive, but to really get to the root causes, Dr. Gist indicated, to try to support the kid and if necessary, the family.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. House?
Yes, sir.
Have the teachers bought into this or do they have a choice? Because I, I, I understand what you're trying to do and I think it's a smart way to do it, but are the teachers really bought into this because they're the one that's going to have to implement?
They, Dr. Gist went along with, not only on this journey, not only with herself, but she had a team of individuals. We've talked to principals about this and teachers now understand that this is not only something that's, it's good for kids, but it's good for, for our school system as a whole as well. So we'll be doing introductory trainings, not only explaining that you're doing this, but the why. And if it's good for kids, our teachers understand that it will be good, a, a good practice for themselves as well.
As far as the, as far as the category one offenses, I, I asked principals to send some survey questions out to the, to five or 10 teachers in their building that they considered very good classroom managers. So I had 59 teachers to tell me, this is what I handle in my classroom already and this is how I handle it. And those are the offenses that we selected as category one offenses. Now, do 100% of teachers handle those offenses on their own? No. And that's one reason we're making this change because we have seen a, a great increase in behavior issues and, and partly prompted by some mental health issues among our students. And if a, if an assistant principal is having to deal with students who don't bring a pencil to class, that takes up the time that they could be using to help students with more complex needs.
If I could jump in for just a second, you know, as a teacher, Jimmy, if you can't handle those small things, I mean, that's just the crux of it. You have to make a relationship with those kids. You can't just send them to somebody else. That's like the mom telling the dad, so-and-so did the wrong thing, you discipline him.
I got that, okay.
Mr. Garland, we've had support team for, for many years. So it has been primarily used for academics, but its other function is behavior. We're just emphasizing the behavior support at this point with, with RTI being so successful with the interventions. So we're not asking teachers to do anything that we haven't had a structure in place to do in the past. We're just emphasizing the behavioral aspect.
I got you. Thank you.
I've, I've got two questions on this. The first being, the, sorry, the, the first being, for, for all these like category one offenses or even the category two offenses really, are we outlining, outlining and defining what the teacher or administrator, if you get to category two or three level? Are we outlining what their options are for, for each offense? Or is it just kind of then depict whatever they feel necessary?
No, no, those are outlined and our principals have been accustomed to using a, a progressive sort of, of discipline. So if, if you're seeing a student for the third time for skipping a class, number one, you may consider a, a little bit stiffer punishment, but the big thing we want administrators to start noticing is what we've done so far has not changed that behavior. We've got to figure out why that student is skipping that class or exhibiting that behavior so that we can correct it.
Oh, absolutely. So for example, you know, talking in class, let's just say, to use for an example. So I mean, is it broke down for them, you know? If, if you have a situation where you're dealing with that, these are the different options you have to deal with this student.
Yes, yes, yes.
And then they, then they decide what they feel like is best out of that category of options.
So, so that would be a, a classroom, that, that would be an offense handled by the classroom teacher and for example, and yes, there are a plethora of, of options. Proximity, you go near the student, you give them the teacher look and, and most of our teachers know this and we, we will have PD and refreshers on how to handle those classroom infractions.
And my next question was, is it defined necessarily? How many times a student would have to repeat level one before they get bumped to level two or level two before they get bumped to level three?
Yes, it's, 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 it will be, yes, it's on most offenses, it's the fourth documented offense. Cell phones, it's two. We had, that was one of our more prolonged discussions on cellphone use, but all others is the fourth documented offense.
So you're saying that the fourth documented bumps you up to the next level?
Correct, correct.
So if you were at a category, if you had already got into a category two, then you repeated that four times, then you would go to category three?
So for classroom teachers, it's the fourth offense. For administrators, they still have that leeway. And as you get, for example, if, if, if you have committed a category three offense such as wearing a shirt with gang symbols on it and you've already been seen once or twice, that would probably bump you up a little quicker. But that's, that's the leeway that our administrators have been accustomed to for years is knowing their students and knowing when a, a next consequence is a, a little bit different consequence is needed. And, and again, we want our administrators to get into also the habit of if they're seeing repeat offenders, we're, what we're doing is not working. We've got to try some sort of intervention that will correct the behavior.
And Josh, what you, what you'll see in just a moment as we go through the categories are some examples of just that.
Okay, I, I've got one more question, but it may get answered in the next part. I'll wait till we go through it first.
Okay, so use of points, our past practice for decades, I think, students may be considered for remandment when they have accumulated 75 or more points. I think this has probably impacted our disproportionality issue more than anything else. If a student collected 75 points for having a cell phone or dress code issues in the past, they could end up at alternative school for those, those minor issues. We have cleaned that up a bit through the years, but there were still some, some issues that, that, that were just unforgivable. Our proposed revision is accumulation of points will indicate to school counselors and administrators that students may need different or additional supports or interventions. So we, we no longer want to use points at all for determining when a student needs to go to alternative school. Here's an example, this is in our current code of conduct, skipping class, which of course is, is not a good thing and we don't tolerate that. But on the fourth offense of skipping class, that totals up to 75 points and we, we could send a student to alternative school. And again, it is, it is not our belief that alternative school is a, is a, a tool that should be used for minor offenses. So our proposed change for that same offense would be if a student skips class, it's required parent contact, it is required for them to see a school counselor. Their first offense might be detention. They would receive 10 points. If they have a second offense, they would receive another 10 points. They might receive in-school suspension that time. If they skip class a third or fourth time, what we have done so far is obviously not working and, and it would probably be, be time to, to call in the teachers and the school counselor and, and really get to the, and the student to get to the root of why that student is skipping class. This is a copy of the page where school administrators enter behavior data. And if you look at the red arrow, our technology department has built a system that keeps up with the, the total tally of points. And this particular student has a total of 160 points. He in fact has been to alternative school multiple times. Instead of using that total point for an indicator of that student needing the stiffest punishment we have, we want our administrators to become accustomed to routinely using that total points marker as, wow, I, I need to check in on that kid. That student needs some support that he's not been getting. So questions about changes in the use of points?
Herb Nelson here again. I just had one other question. So on the category one and two offenses, is that, is that tracked in some way? Like say if a student had an issue in Mr. Williams's class and then later on that day in Ms. Davis's class, is that tracked for those, for those level offenses for them to be?
Yes, and we have, that is a good question. We've got two options there. Some of our schools are already using a free Google Doc where teachers enter classroom offenses and those are grouped together so that you can see, everyone can contribute to that. We also have some schools that are using a program that they purchased. It's about $2,500 from the positive behavior intervention system company. And it, it has a lot more bells and whistles. We will not be purchasing that for all of our schools this year, of course, but some individual schools have used their title money to, to purchase that.
Okay, and just one other thing, how about if a student has an encounter with the SRO, is that also included in the student's, you know, category offense?
That would, it would depend on, on what happened, but if, if, if the student had broken a law or had some, was found to be guilty of some crime, then that would be entered on our Power School, that, that screen that I just showed you. That's a, that's a running record that we have and it transfers. I, I can look up an eighth grader, you know, if, if a parent calls and says, my child has never gotten in trouble before, I can look that up while I'm on the phone with them and say, well, it says here in the second and third and fourth and fifth grade that this happened.
Right, that permanent record that they always talked about.
Yes, yes, now it's really true. Okay. Right, so, yes.
I'm sorry, I didn't know if everybody's been asking. So my question was, it seems to me like teachers and administrators may have a little more freedom and, and decisions that they make now with what we're looking at shifting to as far, you know, as far as what, when they are, are dealing with a student, what option they go with at that particular time. Do we? And I'm, I'm fine with that. My only concern is do, do we have anything in place to make sure that we're covered as far as anybody feeling that, well, you decided to do this with Jimmy, but you didn't do this with Bill?
And, and that actually has gone on historically for years. We have, we have probably every week, there is a teacher who questions that. And the, in the assistant principal's office and the principal's office, they tend to see a bigger picture sometimes. If, if a student is sent to the office for sleeping, sometimes the teacher wants that student to be put in ISS for five days for sleeping in class. But in conversation, the assistant principal may realize that that student's dad was arrested the night before and he didn't get any sleep. And so the assistant principal or the principal has the leeway to adjust, adjust a consequence. That is always, that's always been the case.
Thank you.
Did that answer your question?
Yes, ma'am.
But when you get to those category three and category four behaviors, there's a lot of consistency in that approach.
Right, right.
My, my question would be the, you know, sometimes, I mean, this, we, we always say in the student, the students, the students, sometimes this, this, the teacher might not be doing everything that they need to do and the student might be upset because of that. How would that play into this scenario?
And that's the change that, that you're seeing in, in this new system, Jimmy, is, is about support versus just the punitive nature that, that a teacher or administrator, we're trying to get down to the root cause in these situations because as Mayor, as Dr. Dr. Gist indicated, if, if we, you know, if, if a child has been if, if we, you know, if, if a child has been abused, if a child has gone through homelessness, they're not necessarily going to be care about what comes out of their mouth. It's important for us to understand what those needs are, uh, before we're punitive or tackle on points. So that's why we're trying to shy away from a point system and really focus our efforts on exactly what it is in terms of root cause analysis and how we can support kids versus going straight, uh, straight to alternative schools. And that, and that takes an understanding by our, our administrators that takes, it's going to be a change for us. But as, as Dr. Gis indicated, we're one of the only, only school districts that has had this in place, uh, you know, currently, and it's, it's long overdue. And, and I'm looking forward to, looking forward to, to it being good for kids, not adults.
We, we had a situation, um, this past year where a, a student walked into a classroom and, and looked at the teacher and said, hey, bruh. And the teacher was offended and sent the student to the office for being disrespectful. And so, you know, administrators are put in the place where they're trying to support teachers. And in this case, the administrator supported the teacher and that happened to be the ten points that sent that student over the edge and he was sent to alternative school because that just saying, hey, bruh, was the straw that broke the camel's back. That's what we're trying to get away from. And you're exactly right, Mr. Garland, we, we've been really pushing, um, teachers emphasizing that, that relationship building from the first minute students walk in the door, really, uh, asking teachers to greet students every day and spend time building relationships. That is the heart of every bit of this.
I could just say quickly how excited I am about this new way of doing business because, you know, it's on the adults to stay cool because the kids are still kids. I just love it and I really appreciate you guys doing this.
So, uh, a third major, uh, change in this, in this year's code of conduct is an emphasis on supports and interventions. Supports for, for students include making clear expectations for a middle and high school student who goes to six or seven different classes. That's six or seven different sets of expectations. And if they're not clear, that's, uh, that sets the student up for struggle and failure. We have a, we'll have a structured path to a school counselor. We, we will, we're rebooting our support team. And if those, those structures don't work, then we have behavior specialists that we can then go to and, and get help for, for the cases we can't figure out. Support for teachers, there'll be training and suggestions for preventative strategies. Eighty percent of behavior issues can be prevented. We are focused on creating trauma-informed classrooms and professional learning for all of our teachers. So here's, uh, here's what some category one offenses would look like and the support that would be provided. So these are to be handled by the classroom teacher. Sleeping in class, not prepared for class, rude or impolite remarks to an adult, refusal to complete classroom assignments. So, um, for any of those, the, the first, the first, uh, line of offense or a first line of direction for a teacher would be, you know, are you okay? Remember the expectation is this, um, contact the parent, document it. And for those particular offenses listed there, also refer the student to the counselor because if the student is sleeping in class or if they are, uh, short-tempered and rude, there, there is an underlying cause there. And as Ms. Martha just said, these are, these are kids, even the sixteen and seventeen-year-olds, they're kids and they're still, they're still learning how to navigate, uh, through, through school and through life.
What I like about what you're talking about here is the fact that you are focusing not only on the student and the parent, but you're also bringing the counselor heavily into the process. Because in the past, you, we haven't heard a whole lot about the counselors having to do this, having to do that. That should be there, number one, a primary goal is to make sure that kid is home.
You are, you are correct, Mr. Garland. About two years ago, I believe, the, the state removed, uh, testing duties from, from counselors and they are now expected to spend eighty percent of their time working with students. So, uh, we, we are aligning this work with, with their work. So every year, this is the part we have gone through every year, we, we tweak the wording and update names and, and websites. And David, if you'll switch me over to that Word document.
I'm not sure I have that Word document contained in what I've got.
Okay.
Dr. Gis, you want to go ahead and continue with this portion and then we'll come back to the Word?
Sure.
Okay. And never mind, I've got the Word. And almost there.
PowerPoint in the board pack.
I emailed that to you.
Yep, we've got it.
Earlier also.
We've got it up here. How's that?
It's very tiny, but I, I have another copy if others can read it.
Okay, let's go with it.
Okay. All right, so the first column is the page number of our current code of conduct. And then the second column is the topic and then the change and the rationale. So on page seven, under the topic of student rights, we've replaced Special Populations Director, that title, with the title of District Section 504 Coordinator as the contact for hearing requests. And also we revised that phone number, just for clarification. On pages eight and nine, uh, under the Section 504 Services, this is the only, um, change in here that I've simply summarized because it is about a page and a half long. So that entire section was updated by our Section 504 Coordinator to reflect updates in the law, definitions of disability, suspension of students under Section 504 and, uh, manifestation determination review. On page eleven, under our general introduction to discipline, we added the phrase due process prior to that definition. Also on page eleven, in that same introductory paragraph, our current and past code of conduct has, has had the phrase, when it has been determined by the principal that a student has been guilty of a violation of the provisions of this policy, the principal shall impose appropriate disciplinary measures. We changed that wording just to reflect our, uh, approach to social and emotional learning and removed some of the more harsh words like guilty and, uh, disciplinary measures. So our proposed replacement is, says the same thing. When it has been determined that a student has violated a provision of this policy, the student will receive appropriate consequences. Also on page eleven, um, in that introductory paragraph, the current statement is, it is the intention of the Board of Education that this policy be viewed as cumulative so that repeat or persistent violations of the policy should result in enhanced punishment. Students may be considered for remandment when they have accumulated seventy-five or more points. Proposed replacement for that statement is accumulation of points will indicate to school counselors and administrators that students may need different or additional supports or interventions. In the same paragraph, uh, we are adding a description of each of the four categories and, uh, just a brief description of those that we went over in the PowerPoint. On page twelve, under the description of in-school suspension, we added the phrase in-school suspension is appropriate for category two or category three offenses. On page thirteen, in our current code of conduct, we'll add, under the description of out-of-school suspension, that out-of-school suspension may be an appropriate response for category three or category four offenses. On page twenty-four, uh, our zero tolerance offenses are listed there and we have instruction that those require a mandatory one-year calendar expulsion. We are adding that phrase to each of those four sections just for clarification and also adding that they will be assigned fifty points per offense. Pages forty-two through forty-four contain a required description of all the assessments that we give in the district. And we updated all of those website information. We replaced TCAP with T and Ready. We added Science and Social Studies to the list of those state assessments. We added four new terms to the glossary. At the end of the code of conduct, we added CBD, which is short for cannabidiol, a compound derived from marijuana plant. Most if not all CBD products may be purchased, may not be purchased by minors in Tennessee. We also added definition of the term retaliation and defense. Those, uh, those come up quite often. Retaliation is the act of harming someone because they have harmed you. Self-defense, a student who reasonably believes him or herself to be in imminent danger from another student uses the necessary force to protect him or her, himself or herself. If the victim of force has the opportunity to walk away but chooses to use her force in retaliation, this is not self-defense. And finally, we added, uh, the acronym THC for tetrahydrocannabinol, a compound that is the chief intoxicant in marijuana. And the following, um, are from those charts in our student code of conduct. These are the actual offenses that we have changed some wordings to. For cell phones, currently on page eighteen, the student, we added, the student will be referred to a school administrator for a category two office referral upon their second documented offense. Individual schools will develop and communicate expectations for compliance. Currently on page sixteen, uh, we have had one sort of catch-all offense for vulgar and profane language. And we are proposing that we, uh, divide that into three categories. So our proposed change is, um, if a, if a student is overheard talking with a peer and uses an obscene or inappropriate language that is not derogatory, then that is a category one offense and can be handled by the teacher. If, if there are profane remarks or language used in remarks to an adult that is not derogatory, perhaps a slip, that is a category two offense and an office referral. Or, uh, when a student uses vulgar and profane language directed toward either an adult or a student that is derogatory, that is a category three office referral. Page, currently on page nineteen, we've had this offense titled for several years disruptive or boisterous conduct. And teachers shared with me some input this year that, uh, that is often, uh, when students are talking in class and teachers say, you're disruptive, you need to go to the office. So, uh, we've tweaked that a bit and suggest changing it to boisterous disruptive conduct with the explanation engaging in loud, rowdy conduct that is disruptive to the educational process. For the, the offense of tobacco possession, we are adding the phrase vapor or e-cigarettes will be tested for the presence of THC by the school resource officer. Possession of THC is a zero tolerance offense resulting in a mandatory one-year expulsion. For minor offenses on school buses, we are adding, uh, refer to council, school counselor for the third and subsequent offenses. And we're, uh, all minor bus offenses would receive ten points per offense. For major offenses on buses, uh, the third and fourth categories described in those will also be, uh, include a ref, a referral to the school counselor. And all major bus offenses would receive twenty points per offense. Currently on page nineteen, disrespect toward teacher or school system employee. And, and this goes back to the example I used earlier where the, the student walked into class and said, hey, bruh. We have, have broken that down into, um, categories where rude or impolite remarks would be a category one offense. That's the opportunity for, for students. And then for those with threatening or derogatory language, those would, would be category two, three, or four. Currently on page twenty-three is credible threat. The state removed the, the requirement that this offense could be up to a one calendar year expulsion, but not a mandatory calendar year. So we totally removed that statement by state law that is no longer a one calendar year. We, we are listing designated some category threes that would require, um, that the school principal or assistant principal confer with their level director before the student is sent to alternative school. Those, um, those would be category four offenses including repeated category three offenses, credible threats, threats toward any school system employee, gangs, or other conduct warranting discipline. And we are, we are implementing that step where for those few offenses, the school administrator needs to confer with the level director. That is solely so that we can try to minimize our disproportionality issue. For example, um, many people use the phrase, I'm going to kill you. And sometimes the grown-ups take that more seriously than it is in, that it is meant. Now, we do very much, uh, you know, that is, that is not a, a good thing to say and, and certainly not something that we would just, just overlook. But we want to, to make sure we separate just using that phrase from the, the students who would use that phrase and back it up. Let's see, a new offense that we're adding is verbal altercation with a peer. Explanation would be a loud argumentative exchange with a peer. Anger is evident in at least one party. That would be a category two offense with a referral to a school counselor. Hopefully if we hear students arguing, we can, uh, nip that in the bud and step in in time to, to resolve conflict. Questions?
Thank you, Dr. Gis. If there are any additional questions, we'll move on to item number two, which is our consolidated federal projects applications. As you all, as you all know, on an annual basis, we bring our consolidated federal projects application to you. Uh, and as you'll see, uh, in your board packet, uh, our Title One, One A, we're, we're looking at about seven, seven, uh, seven and a half million dollars that we're focusing on there. Title Two, um, you'll see it's about a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars in terms of neglected and delinquent youth, our Title Two dollars. You know, go down, you'll see improving teacher quality, English language learners, student support and academic enrichment, uh, which make up the entire federal projects budget. We of course, um, have, um, Phyllis is on the call, Phyllis Case Boat, who is, um, our, uh, really keeps the oars in the water in terms of our federal projects in our instructional department. And she'd be glad to answer any questions at this time if anyone has them right now. Okay, item number three, uh, kind of takes us back a bit. And Jim, if you're, you may take yourself off of mute. You may remember a while back, um, we brought resolutions to the county commission for Oakland Elementary and West Creek, West Creek Elementary for twelve or thirteen classroom additions. We were able to identify where that growth is continuing to happen. And, and these are those resolutions for the first read, uh, to, to see if you guys have any questions around those. to see if you guys have any questions around those. Item number four, I'll actually turn it over to Marcia. Marcia, if you would come off of mute, that would be great. And I'll let you kind of share what this amendment is all about for the first read.
Okay. So this is actually an adjustment of the amendment that we brought to you at the end of April, where we were doing our cleanup amendments for June. And in the course of looking at our budget and looking at maintenance of effort, when we were looking at maintenance of effort for this upcoming year, it came to my attention that when we had made some adjustments to our revenues, decreasing our property tax revenues and some of the categories of the property tax revenues and the local option sales tax adjustment that we had done, it had actually would have caused a slight adjustment or I guess a maintenance of effort issue between this year's budget and the prior year's budget to the amount of a hundred and seventy-five thousand, let me see, a hundred and seventy-one thousand, three eighty-seven. And so for that reason, there were some categories of revenues that we had not adjusted in that original amendment that were increases. And so we went ahead and put those in there. And so looking at, and they're all in local revenues, and they're going down the category there. Then they're all based on actual year-to-date collections. So we have trustees collection, bankruptcy. And looking at the third column there, the amount would be ten thousand, one hundred and thirteen dollars. We have bank excise tax, increase of thirty-two thousand, four hundred and twenty-seven dollars. Going down a few lines, we have the school-based health program, an increase of sixty thousand, six hundred and three dollars. Lease rentals, an increase of twenty-eight thousand, nine thirty-eight. Miscellaneous refund other, and this is related to our procurement card rebate that we received. And that's an increase of ten thousand, two hundred and eighteen dollars. Sale of equipment, twenty-five thousand, seven hundred and twenty-nine dollars. And then that contributions and gifts amount, originally, we had two thousand there. And so this is an additional three thousand, three hundred and fifty-nine dollars. And so, as I said, the increase there is a total of one hundred and seventy-one thousand, three hundred and eighty-seven dollars. And that's really just to make sure that we are in compliance with this year compared to the prior year for maintenance of effort. And then all other items on that amendment were items that we had covered in the amendment last month.
Any questions for Marcia in reference to number five? Well, we'll move right into number six, which is the 2021 budget adjustments. Marcia?
Okay. And so on this, as we went to the budget hearing, one of the items that the commissioners had requested, we had originally had six hundred and forty thousand dollars that we had increased in the current property taxes. And that would have caused an adjustment to the number of pennies that we would have received. And so in speaking with them and then also speaking with Mary Ann Dersky, who's with State and Local Finance, we made an adjustment to move those dollars from the current property tax line item that they had originally been in and to show those in the local option sales tax line item. And so we had six hundred and forty thousand dollars that moved there. And then again, an additional, based on what I just went over with that amendment, the one hundred and seventy-one thousand, three hundred and eighty-seven dollars also increasing in the local option sales tax. And that all makes us so that our maintenance of effort for all three of these years, the prior year, the current year, and next year, will be in line and will meet maintenance of effort.
Questions at all? Okay, Madam Vice Chair, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Mr. House. Any comments, county commissioners? Are they online? Board members, any comments? Back to you, Ms. House.
Yes, ma'am. Just three quick things that I'd like to share. As you all know, the governor did allow for electronic meetings until, I believe, Carol, it was April seventeenth. Is that correct? So until April seventeenth. So we will definitely move forward with next week's board meeting via Zoom and electronically. But I wanted you all to be aware, we don't know whether there's going to be an extension of that right now. We'd like to do these meetings in conjunction to an eventual reopening of the administrative offices, which kind of takes me to my next item. We've concentrated and shifted our efforts in our senior leadership team to a potential reopening, not a reopening of schools for students, but an administrative reopening of our offices. So we have a preliminary plan in place, and I'll be presenting that plan in next week's board meeting so that you guys have a good idea of exactly what that's going to look like moving forward. We're looking at a few weeks down the road when we're going to officially bring, with major adjustments, bring certain groups back in a modified manner. But I've been proud of my team to put a comprehensive plan, department by department, together. Just wanted you to have a heads up that that was coming next week. Also, our Instruction Department has been tasked with really looking ahead a few months down the road. We know where we are now. We're going to be celebrating our students one way or the other via graduation. But we've got to look even further down the road. So we're working on plans right now in reference to what the opening of the school year will look like. We know that it'll be different. We know that there are possibilities out there right now. Excuse me, and I said May seventeenth, the electronic meetings are up until May eighteenth, not April. But we know that schools across America are going to have a different task in opening. So, you know, we're bold in what we do. And I've asked my Instruction Department to take a close look at what that opening could look like. We may have parents that may not be comfortable, depending on where the numbers are in the U.S., in Montgomery County, if there's a second outbreak, if they're not. If there's not, you know, I would be happy to get back to some normalcy. But we want to do what's responsible. So we're looking at two different pathways. And we're planning, you know, as best we can to ensure that we're not caught sitting on our hands. So my Instruction Team, as well as some outside support that we're looking at receiving, we're also looking at the possibility of bringing in some consultants to really talk about what this can look like long-term, if there are any issues as well. The last thing, and I'll have more information around that, you know, over the course of the next months. Because this planning will not happen overnight. It's something that our team is working on right now in terms of the start of the school year. And we will have a plan with a fork in the road, if necessary. But we'll be prepared regardless of what the future looks like for us in reference to COVID-19. The last thing that I'll mention is that plans have been put in place for our students to pick up personal items. So they're receiving emails, communication from individual schools for dates of actual pickup times, because we know there are some items that still need to be picked up. We also, our Technology Department has worked out specific dates for laptop retrieval as well. So that information is going out to students so that they will know exactly when to get that information or get laptops and the technology back. I know there were a couple of questions from board members in reference to that that I know you're still getting. But I wanted you to know that that's something that I believe, actually, from a communication standpoint, that went out today in reference to personal items and the laptop pickup as well. So any questions for me at this time before we close out?
I just have a quick one. So I realize that you guys have put communication excuse me, communication out. But if a parent is contacting us, should we have them call a particular high school?
Yes, they can. It would be best for them to reach out via email directly to the administration at the school.
Okay. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Mr. House?
Yes, sir.
Sorry. Just to clarify my thoughts on the computers and everything on the middle school next year, are we going to have enough in their budget or we're not?
We will. We actually had laptop computers that were deployed for all of our middle school and high school students already. So all middle school and high schools have laptops. Elementary students are the ones that don't have laptops at home. They have access at school. So yes, we do have enough computers. And we have had enough computers at the middle school and high school level already.
If they can take home.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Listen, I was going to ask a question of the board in this format.
Sure.
One of the things that we are having a problem with across the nation is in remote areas, students don't have access to the internet. Is there any way that we could actually do a resolution to our legislators in the Congress and the Senate to ask them to challenge the Budget Committee up there to actually fund a program that would actually put, convert our buses to hotspots so that we can provide some similarity of access to those kids?
That is one of the items that the Commissioner of Education, I know, has brought to the table as an option when it comes to the ten percent CARES Act dollars that the state can actually hold over. Now, they're looking at several items. They're looking at additional technology. They're looking at broadband access. So that is something that's on their list of possibilities that they're looking at. Know it's a problem in several areas of remote Tennessee. Some of those areas are right here in Montgomery County. But it's definitely on the radar right now. But it also is definitely something that our board can focus its efforts on if we truly feel like it's something that we want to move forward with Mr. Garland, definitely.
But that's something I would actually want to consider. We don't have to talk or discuss it right now. But we can talk to you and let you know what our opinions are. This would allow Congress to actually set aside dollars across the nation for school districts that have kids in remote areas that do not have access so that the district can actually make their school buses into hotspots. And we can place those buses out there in those communities. Those kids will still have access to our internet. That would be the plan. That's something that we can discuss and have you want to discuss it. But I think that's something we need to do. Congress needs to know that we want this.